Ready?
You can do it, Bob.
Call to order, September 20th, 2023, study session. Roll call, please.
Uh, Robert Burleson.
Here.
Yolanda Cardona. John Gillis here. Joe Gomez-Dagel.
Here.
Bob Vloy.
Here.
Jenna Lordson.
Here.
John Kennedy. Absent. Attorney Adam Decker.
Here.
Engineer John Dykstra.
Here.
Councilman Liaison Brian Blazek.
Present.
Town Manager Joe Wizwati.
Present.
Okay, first item, item A. Rose Garden, Phase Three, Block Two. Proposed final plat of Rose Garden, Phase Three, Block Two, single-family residential lots. Southeast corner of Willow Lane and 91st Place.
Good evening, Doug Reddick with DVG. Mike Granacy is here as a developer of Rose Garden as well. I guess I have a, I'll start with a couple of questions and comments, but this is what we would like to do. We want to plat these five lots of Rose Garden. So the original part there is Phase Three, is that East West Street, 91st Avenue. So that was, um, Rose Garden, Phase Three, Block One. We're looking to do Block Two right now. The street is in, as you can see, to the, by the shading there. So there's three lots that everything, all the improvements are in for, and we would like to final plat those. The other two, um, lots one and two, and that cul-de-sac, that, that cul-de-sac is not built. And that's one of the discussion items tonight. The original drawings for Rose Garden, Phase Three, showed the road going all the way through and not ending in a cul-de-sac and connecting to there. We hit really bad soil right in there, uh, to the point where it's so deep, we can't, we can't build that road. We have wetlands go right up to the property line there. That's that kind of heavy dash line. We even have wetlands where we want to put that cul-de-sac. The wetlands we can manage, but the test holes right where the cursor is there are just terrible, terrible dirt. And we, we want to deviate from the original plan and terminate that road with the cul-de-sac. So that's, we want to redo the primary plat, basically, to, um, allow the construction of that cul-de-sac.
Doug, are you able to, to put that cul-de-sac in that wetland area that's delineated there?
Well, they have to permit that. There's an impact there, so we're aware of that, and we know that's going to take some time.
Okay.
But wetlands, we can manage that. My permitting is not a big area. Some of the regulations have lightened up a little bit, so that'll help with that. So yes, there's an expense there, um, but it's, it's really almost undoable to, to go straight down and connect to that other road, even though it's ideal. I'm not going to lie, it's, it's, it'd be ideal, but it's just such a small project and such an expense. It just, this developer can't, can't do that.
How deep is, have you done soil borings?
They dug down eight or 10 feet, and it was just nothing but slop. And it's not good.
And they didn't reach?
No.
Not even after 10 feet?
No, they, they were actually digging with an excavator, not borings, and it was just sloppy, watery, unstable ground. So it would, it would require, you know, a ton of money in remediation. Again, the project's just not that big to justify the, the huge expense there. So that's why we're, kind of a twofold thing. We would like to plat the three lots. He's got people interested in, in, you know, the lots, of course. And then we'll redo the engineering, because, of course, the original engineering doesn't show the cul-de-sac. So we would have to do that, permit the wetlands. We, we know we can construct it, um, as shown here. The detention pond is built, um, maybe very minor modifications if any to that. So we, we want to do a primary, or sorry, a final plat, ideally for the lots three, four, and five, kind of a two-step process, and then redo the primary plat to add the cul-de-sac, or to revise it to show the cul-de-sac. So that's what we're here tonight, just to get your thoughts on, on that and how we can proceed from there.
So does Sublime, or not Sublime, Rose Garden, does the property go down to 92nd Place?
So it- Yeah, he owns all that. It's all wetlands, all the wetlands in Flood Plain.
How about the end, now, Bob, do you plow this street?
Uh- Many moons ago, I did plow that street, yes.
And being a dead end, that's probably-
It's horrible. You have to back all the way out of 92nd there.
Four, four times.
Four, four times, yes. There's just four passes on each road.
Now, how about the soil at the end of 92nd Place?
Do you recall, isn't it better there?
No, that's where, like, John, you were there with me.
Yeah. It was, they, we, they kind of started digging here, and they dug back that way a little bit, and it was all just soft, unstable soil.
Okay, good. I was hoping that better there, so we could put a cul-de-sac.
Well, I'm thinking, you know, maybe we could throw in like a stone tee turnaround?
Oh, that's kind of there now.
But do you use it?
Yes.
Not in the winter, though.
We get stuck there sometimes, yes. Yeah, we, we use it.
Well, I mean, but Mike owns a property, and if there's a way to improve that and put down some matting and, I think it has to be stone. It's, it's going to move no matter what.
Probably some two-inch or something like that.
Probably not going to happen. But a temporary stone tee that you can pull up, back up and go. I think there's merit in that, and we're not opposed to something like that. We want to work with the town on that. You guys know it best, you know?
How's the, anybody know about the residents? They, they want it to be a dead end, or do, does anybody know?
I believe they, they came out-
They did, in opposition.
Yeah, in opposition.
Opposition of the road tying in.
What about, um, water main infrastructure, extending that to the 92nd Place? Is that something that you guys are considering?
Was that in the original engineering?
It was, and it was going on the far east side, and they said that would probably even have to be supported on piles or something, because we can't even put that in.
Yeah, piles or those helical piers.
Yeah, either one, right. And it's not that we need a second entrance. We do have a second entrance, you know, to the north and east, so that's not really an issue. And then that goes up and then goes east and connects over to the east.
My concern is the dead end water main, obviously.
Yeah.
A self-flushing hydrant or something on the end of that.
Um, it might be just to loop the water main around if we had to.
Or, or yeah.
Because the water main's into there already. It might be easier to come down a lot. A loop would be better.
Yeah.
We just did that at Continental. We're-
Yeah.
I don't think we're too opposed to that. It would be way easier than trying to put it through there. Yeah, just having another dead end there just would be bad. And, and we understand that. Yeah.
So John, you were out in this area, you didn't see any stable ground?
No, not in the area between the-
It was wet, but was there, there was no good clay?
No, not as far down as the 10 feet they dug.
Okay. Yeah, I would think something would have to be worked out with some kind of turnaround.
As they were digging, in between scoops, it was, the sides would just peel off and fall in and
Yeah.
fill up with water.
Yeah, maybe like an erosion fabric, one of those mesh tensar geogrid, uh, and then some more stone compacted in the best you can, and just have to dress it up every now and then, probably. I think something could be done to improve that area. But asphalt or concrete, it's just not a good idea.
So this block would be one through five lots?
Well, unless we can break it up into two different plats, which is what Mike would prefer. He has interested people for the, all the lots or a couple of lots? Couple of them. So we can come in pretty quick with lots, with the final plat for lots three, four, and five.
Okay.
And then we'll come, at the same time, we'll do revised primary for the other two and the cul-de-sac. And then if we don't, we're not going to build it this year anyway, we can't. By the time we get the wetland permits and everything, we're looking at spring anyway. But it would help out some of his buyers to have those three lots available, because there's nothing to put in the ground. It's all, everything's there.
Yeah.
It's just platting. So is there, I don't think there's an issue with our primary plat still being active, right?
Um, I believe the last I saw was like 2018, so I think this was another one that slipped through the cracks of not being updated, but I mean-
So that's, I guess, the concern. If our primary plat is technically void, um, or not. So if it is, then we really can't do the final plat for the three lots now. We'd have to do the, all five at once.
I mean, not necessarily before this commission has allowed for kind of a retroactive
Extension?
Yeah, extension to be made.
I mean, I guess I would need-
Unfortunately, it was just something that just wasn't kept up with on a, on a staff level, you know, in the past, so.
So, I mean, that's where we need a little bit of feedback from. If that's how you want, we could, we could certainly ask for that extension to get those three lots in there and then do the final plat. And then again, we'll follow up immediately with engineering for the cul-de-sac. That would be our preferred course of action.
Guys okay with that, or?
Yeah, that seems fair.
Yeah.
I feel like we've done it for other people, so it would be-
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Appreciate that courtesy. We'll, we'll start paperwork for that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So will you be here, Doug, for the October? Is that when you want, you won't be ready? October meeting?
Is that a public hearing for the request to, for extensions?
You better, you better come up.
No, it is, there's no public hearing for an extension request. It would just have to be presented at a regular meeting, so I can go back and kind of figure out the timeline of how many extensions you would need to get it up to date.
Are they, are they one year each?
Uh, no, they're six months.
Six months.
Yeah, so I'll go back and, and count how many you would need.
If there's no public hearing, yeah, we could do that in October. I'd like to keep it moving.
Okay.
Then we could do, hopefully, final plat in, uh, November. Okay? Thank you.
Next item on the list is Martin's Commercial Edition, Lot Nine. Proposed amendment to the site plan requesting a waiver of sidewalk width along Parish Avenue.
The petitioner for this didn't provide us with the cross-section of the swale to show us the
Difficulties.
difficulties associated with the wider sidewalk, so we'll defer this till next month and see if he can get us the documents.
For me, just for the record, I feel that he should just be able to put it in. It, you know, just if he needs a bearing, uh, landscape wall or whatever he needs to, uh, to put the bike path in. I just, I think if we let him go, then we got to let other people go, and next thing you know, we're putting in a four-foot walk when we want a eight-foot walk.
Yeah, and we're already working with, with Indot on the, the roundabout design, in terms of crosswalks and stuff like that. So they didn't have that in their original plan, but we're making them do it, so.
Okay. All right, so the next item, item C. Uh, CLD, CLD Holdings LLC. Proposed site plan of a drive-in restaurant at 9520 Wicker Avenue, St. John.
Uh, good evening. My name is James Huss with DVG. This is my client, Corey Dedmore, CLD Holdings LLC. We are, um, here to, um, report that there have been no design changes, um, as related to the, um, the site plan that has been, um, brought in front of the Plan Commission and BZA. Last month, BZA, um, did, um, provide a favorable recommendation for our list of variances, uh, special use and special exception. Since then, we have submitted, um, the, the complete final site plan to the town. The town engineer has responded with comments, um, that we responded to with a second, second submittal just this afternoon. In my opinion, the, the comments were relatively minor as far as, um, things go. Our schedule going forward, um, we do, we will present the project again in full to the town council at the meeting on the 27th, at which time we hope they concur with BZA and, um, approve our variance requests and special exception. Uh, the, hopefully, last and final meeting will be on October 4th, back in front of the Plan Commission, uh, for our formal public hearing, and we hope to have, um, our work done with the town's engineers, um, after the second submittal by then. I would be happy to walk, I know we've had a couple of meetings before, I don't want to jump the gun too much, but I'd be happy to walk through any of the site plan again, if anybody would care me, care me to. Otherwise, I'm, I'm open for questions.
Oh, we did receive Indot approval since that last meeting?
Yes, since we back, back been in front of Plan Commission. We have received the formal, um, Indot driveway permit and have forwarded the materials to the town.
And they're not recommending a DXL lane or anything like that on 41?
That's correct, yeah. We, we did touch on that, um, a meeting or two ago. I did do some, a deep dive into warrants for a right turn lane. Volumemetric Indiana is actually one of the few states that even gives, um, gives a warrant on a four-lane road for higher speeds than Route 41. Even if you assumed that Route 41 at this location was upwards of 45 miles an hour, the volume is still one-third of approaching the level. That would, uh, trigger a, a real deep look at that.
As long as they're good with it.
Yes, they know, and Indot specifically did not mention the right turn, uh, DXL lane at all.
Any other questions? Guys good? Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Next item, D. Item D, Lot Seven, in the east half of Lot Eight in Munich's First Edition. Proposed preliminary plat for a one-lot subdivision at 12711 West 93rd Avenue.
Hi, I'm Stuart Allen from Terranga Surveying, and I'm representing Mr. and Mrs. Eingenberg. So you can see that lot's been around for a while, empty. And, uh, they'd like to build their home on there. And, uh, if you have any questions, I know I kind of vented it pretty good with, uh, with the engineer. I would like to see if we can do preliminary, or primary and final at the next regular meeting.
Yeah, we've done that in the past, so I don't, I don't see an issue.
They did add the five-foot no-access easement along 93rd, so a driveway can't ever be put out to 93rd.
Also extended it down a little bit onto Hilltop, just because
Yeah.
it's probably not a good idea having a driveway right there.
Yeah, by the intersection, good idea. John, you-
Yeah, Bob, that, uh, they've addressed all comments that we had, or our survey department had, so I don't see any problems. I, I think, uh, it'll be up to the Plan Commission, but it's, it looks good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Stuart.
John, real quick, what's the size of the proposed sidewalk along 93rd? I can't, it's five there?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, but we'll put that in there. It should be five feet.
Yeah, the, it's a residential, so, and, and there, just to note, there are no other sidewalks in this, uh, block or this street. So, um, that'd be the only house with a sidewalk.
Should that be eight feet along 93rd?
I know we had to get a variance on the sidewalk at 93rd because, well, because we couldn't fit an eight-foot sidewalk.
Yeah, they should be eight along 93rd.
Yeah.
Okay.
They, they, on 93rd is, uh, I, I didn't explain it to them.
Yeah, it looks like eight feet to fit there. There's not, there's, it doesn't, there's some drainage, but there's nothing really in the way.
It's a major arterial road, so I know that the standard is eight-foot.
Yeah.
Requirement.
All right.
Very good. And we're not putting a sidewalk on Hilltop?
Yeah, there is a proposed walk along Hilltop.
That one's fine.
And that would be five, yeah. That'd be fine at five.
Well, I don't, I don't see it shown.
It's just on the other side of the dark line there.
Yeah, it's on the outside.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Okay.
So with that, would be the only, if we could make sure that that complies with that, and it's, that it, it, there is an eight-foot or isn't an eight-foot. But I'll leave that up to the engineer and you guys to-
Yeah, we'll get it worked out.
John, do you want to, do you want to look into that for me? And then we'll just make the change and send a, something out tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
It's a simple change, yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Very good.
Thank you.
Next item, amendments. We're on E, amendments to subdivision control ordinance. Proposed amendments to town subdivision control ordinance. John Gill.
Yeah, so, uh, we kind of changed some stuff around, Jenna and I, mostly Jenna, but she kind of detailed that in an email to you guys this afternoon, um, the areas we changed and stuff, and we got some feedback from Adam on how to clean up the language and stuff. So, um, we're looking to get it buttoned up and go to November public hearing with it.
Okay.
So if there's any feedback you guys want to see in there, changed, amended, send us an email.
Not going out. I'm tired of this, not-
Send it out. Yeah, you guys are the experts. You guys deal with the day in and day outs.
That's what I was looking at, Bob, when I said that.
Yeah.
I'm probably the only one that's came and sat down with you guys.
I can come in.
And I know we talked about during the budget process about doing a subdivision control ordinance, possibly zoning, changes and having, perhaps having a consultant come in and assist our, our town with making those changes, cross-referencing everything in the, the current town code, just making sure it's done all at one fell swoop and done correctly. So that might be something we discuss with the council, um, now and then going into 2024.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll, we'll have those conversations as well.
And that's, that's great. I look forward to that happening, um, but we did at least want to get some things fixed that are, they've been issues for a while, and they're not actually, we're not necessarily following the code to a T because of how things have changed. So it's really just kind of some cleanup. We took like the major changes out that should probably have some more discussion, that should, you know, possibly go before a consulting firm for things like that. So these are really just changes that, that need to be made to make sure that everything is actually following how it's supposed to be.
So this is the first wave, maybe another wave later?
Potentially, yeah.
This, this will at least get us cleaned up enough to work with it until later on, something else can be re-implemented.
Yeah, so we're basically the next steps.
Yeah.
Kind of thing.
Remove some of the fog, right?
Yep.
Exactly.
Okay. Any other questions? We're all good. Next item, Continental Unit Three, recommendation to town council for release of cash escrow in the amount of $5,500 in acceptance of a three-year maintenance letter of credit or security bond.
Good evening, Kevin Hunt on behalf of Shilling Development. Cause I believe, um, should have received the engineer's letter. We are working on getting our letter of credit. But otherwise, I think all items on this should be buttoned up.
Okay. Any questions? We're all good? Next item. Calistoga, is that how you pronounce it?
Yeah.
Proposed concept plan for Calistoga, a planned unit development located at the southeast corner of Park Place and US Highway 231. I had to look up that lane, that word today.
Calistoga?
Calistoga.
What does it mean?
Don't know where it came from.
Okay, now enlighten us, Bob.
What's it?
Enlighten us.
Something about eating acorns and, and I, yeah. I don't remember what, exactly what it said, because then there's a Calistoga, California, too, so.
Yeah, on the internet, it's got to be true, eh?
Yeah. Got to believe everything you read on the internet, absolutely.
Especially on Facebook, as well.
Okay, one second, let me grab my other copy here.
Did you hear that?
Again, Kevin Hunt on behalf of Shilling Development. Jack Slager would like to have been here. He's held up in Cedar Lake tonight, and, uh-
Oh, wait, so your leg rings better now?
So, uh, well, we, we've got a public hearing there, so. But both him and I are familiar with the projects. Uh, we both, uh, watched each, each other's presentation, so, uh, we are coming back, um, on these projects that we have. Like, like I mentioned, we both have listened to the last two study sessions. Uh, there have been some changes we've made to the plans. I'm not sure if everyone recalls, but these, neither of these properties, other than, uh, a small portion of the commercial land on Calistoga are in the town of St. John. They would require annexation. Likely, we'd be seeking an annexation agreement to include PUD zoning at that time. So going into the developments themselves, uh, like we've mentioned before, uh, through our experience, we're over 120 years in the land development business, and we continue our research. Right now, we believe that these developments with a mix of the housing products will be the most successful, uh, project, and they're going to be more appealing to a larger demographic. Both of the products have very similar type mix of products. Uh, in addition to the single-family lots, we've got the smaller, uh, maintenance-free lots. As always, with all our developments, we're going to have very high architectural standards and high landscape standards with irrigation as well. You know, we're not, these are more than just small homes and small lots. They're going to meet our higher requirements of covenants. And we certainly see the demand for the maintenance-free product, uh, here in town. Current residents, um, and I know I have a couple of examples of, uh, senior citizens that have decided to move out of town, out of St. John because they lack this product type. Uh, we, we've seen it because we've seen them move into our, our developments in Cedar Lake. Uh, St. John residents that decide to downsize, move out of their larger homes and want to live maintenance-free. So we, we, we like the mix of the product. We, we like the, um, ability to make this walkable, because it will be next to, both of these products will be next to commercial development as well. So we want people to be able to walk or bike to the businesses. And we want to continue using the sidewalks that the Plan Commission has, uh, been very stringent on, all the developments about including their product. So the, uh, the first development is Calistoga. It's 173 acres. As you know, it sits south of, uh, US 231, and it's west of Klein Avenue. Right now, we've got it buffered. The residential side is buffered by the commercial with heavy landscaping between the commercial lot and, uh, the residential lots, uh, likely a berm as well. We'd like to tie access to the subdivision in through, uh, the Park Place entrance, so that way it'll come in. There'll be a type of frontage road that'll allow the, uh, individuals that want to go to the business to come through on the frontage road, and those coming into the subdivision, uh, to veer off to the right and head to the subdivision. This would be a shared entrance. The Park Place entrance would be shared with the gates in Mill Creek. And then we'd have an additional main entrance off of Klein Avenue. You know, based on going through the corridor plan and the 2016 thoroughfare plan, I know Jack's delved into that quite a bit. We're trying to avoid direct access from the commercial lots on 231. So going into some of the changes since the last, when Jack was up here last, a month ago, is that the maintenance-free, single-family lots are going to change to alternate between 60 and 70-foot lots. This really allows us to add a different product type, uh, to that. We don't want to overwhelm with one type of product, and, and I think the feedback we got, um, was attempt to increase the size of those lots. And I think, right now, what we can do is we can alternate that way when some individuals want the smaller lots, we can give them the 60-foot. And some individuals will want additions. They've, we've really seen a lot of people adding sunrooms, patios, gardens, uh, to the back of their, their lots, so they can fit on the 70-foot wide. But that also allows builders to add more product types and allows more diversity. And I think that really separates Shilling Development from a lot of the developers, is our ability to get, uh, diversity on some of these, uh, developments we've done. The, um, and we'll be able to add a little bit larger, um, side yard here, a minimum eight foot on those maintenance-free lots. Uh, the balance would, um, on the, along the detention side would be uh, the paired villas, um, and then the rest of the lots would be traditional, single-family lots. So, um- So we've got the through streets that start from top to back and then we try and connect those into future development to the west, to the south. So we've got our central park with a nice detention facility. We think as always, we'll have nice amenities in our development and we're looking at a density of a little bit under 2.2 units an acre, which is comparable to almost all the single family development in, in that area. Mill Creek, Gates St. John obviously is much denser and some of the other developments as well. So, and then the, the one item that I know Jack mentioned last time, I didn't bring it up the first time I was here, was the, the possibility of the residential TIF. We've already had discussions in other locations about that and the TIF has always been there, but the, the law changed this year to allow all communities to use it before it was limited to certain communities. But what I think a lot of communities would like to do is take this opportunity to set up residential TIFs for areas that lack infrastructure, need a cash flow, cash, in, a little bit more money to do some of the bigger projects they need. So the requirement would be so long as it's near or affecting the development, you'd be able to use that. So we do think that this would be an opportunity for St. John to use some of the cash to make bigger improvements, especially if it complies with the thoroughfare plan that they've already started. So at this point, I, I can go over some of the questions and comments on Calistoga.
Well, you know what I'm going to say, lot width, I'm not happy with the lot width, 60, 70 foot wide. I'm, I'm looking at your drawing and the maintenance free and it's like three quarters of the lot size to the west. You mentioned, you said the word successful, successful now, but is it going to be successful 20 years down the road, 50 years down the road? Is it something St. John wants 50 years down the road, this kind of development? When the baby boomers are, you know, gone, died off, whatever. Is this what St. John wants to have this kind of development 50 years from now? Will it, will it still be successful? I'm, I'm afraid it's not going to be. It'd be successful now, it's hot market, right? People, baby boomers are wanting to get out of there and I get it. They want to get away from mowing grass and trimming bushes and, you know, you know, spending an hour and a half, two hours doing that.
Yeah, and to his point, Kevin, what's our price point on these? What's your anticipated price point for the paired villas versus the maintenance free versus the traditional?
We haven't dug into that too much, but we see this comparable to Greystone.
So something comparable to what you've got in Greystone.
Greystone and the preserve. Put either one of these in the class of the preserve.
It would kind of depend on what gets approved and not, and what we look for, but.
And let's, let's, let's start at the beginning because I think we're kind of way over our skis right now. What you said at the very beginning of this is, you know, pending an agreement for a PUD for annexation. So as you know, in order for that to happen, there has to be unanimous decision by the council. Without a unanimous decision by the council, then the annexation, as you know, would come in as R1. So if this came in as R1, are you prepared to move forward with the project is my question? In other words, if there was not, you know, unanimity on the, the council.
No, I, I understand that. The annexation agreement, I think would trump the, I've looked into it, I believe the annexation.
The annexation agreement, I would assume you would tie in the, the TIF district, the EDA, all that into one package.
Correct. We, we wouldn't be bringing this in as an R1 project.
Right, right. So if, if it didn't go through, you're not inclined to move forward on that, correct? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, I, I believe so. I, I don't want to.
Said in the past, that's what you said.
Put my foot down and say, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I understand why you wouldn't want to move forward. I mean, I'm just asking the question as a, as a matter of, because this is, I, I, this is great, but if, to your point, you're looking for an agreement from the council for the PUD as part of an annexation agreement, as part of a TIF agreement, I'm assuming, you know, you know, development agreement with the town. If that is not unanimous, then obviously, you know, we're, we're going to have some issues on that.
Yeah, I, I think there, there's two parts to the annexation question. The question of.
And we've been in litigation on this matter, so I'm very familiar with that.
Yeah, whether we bring it in as R1 is different than whether we proceed as an R1 development.
Right.
Maybe there's a chance we bring it in as R1 and then seek to rezone, zone that, but.
May I ask you a question? I'm sorry, sir. Go ahead, you were, you were.
So we would not develop it as R1.
I'm sorry?
We would not develop it as R1 development.
Couldn't you at least make a plan and look at it as an R1 in case the agreement came through with annexation? Could you do that or are you just going to say that's it, we're not going to do that, R1s?
Yeah, we wouldn't develop this as a, as R1.
Okay, so it would be your loss.
Yeah, we, at this point, we, we're not going to proceed.
Just not doing it, that's all.
Your choice, I'm sorry.
No, I, I understand.
Choice of words.
No, I understand. So yeah, it just, the project does not make sense as an R1 project for us.
So it goes back to my other question, what value are you bringing on, on this development? For, for, for what you're proposing? And I think those are the questions legitimately that the council would be looking at. What are your price points? What are, what are you bringing on this project in terms of, you know, value? So you guys are proposing paired housing. What's that paired housing look like? Is it, is it, you know, masonry? Is it, you know, what additional value are you bringing? Your price point on, on the paired housing is going to be X dollars. Your pricing on the maintenance free housing is going to be X dollars. And here's how we quantify that. I, I think that's what they're going to look for?
Certainly we'd need to have that information if we got far enough along and we're looking at the annexation agreement. And I certainly, I think there's room for negotiation on the standards we're going to put in on this. I think, but going back to what we're bringing in and what we're willing to do is we're willing to keep our high standards. Obviously you've got the town standards for billing, which are, which are relatively low, but that's just, almost everyone exceeds that. But I think you've got a lot of developments that, that's at a high bar. We like to think that we've set some of the highest bars in St. John and we continue to do that on this development. So I think that's what we bring as opposed to someone that would say, oh, we're going to try and do an R1 development. They're, they're not going to build our standard.
Out of curiosity, just what are, will your number of units be on a 173 acre parcel of land for just R1? Came in R1, you want to put up big plastic houses. I'm sorry, 173, sorry.
Yeah, and I know Jack went over this last time he was here and I don't, I don't have the number in front of me.
I believe it was right around 173.
Yeah, I thought, I thought, I'm guessing it's one, an acre. Because I know that's what our other, our other R1 developments are at that number.
So from a, from a financial point, that's, that's not where you're going to be able to, you know, break even on this?
No, we just can't get the value and I, I think Jack went over some of this with the, we've got future developments that will be R1. This land, the Stone Creek land, just aren't those types of.
Because your R1 is your minimum standard, right? Minimum standard housing.
Well, all our, all our zoning, you're allowed to build the same house per se. That's where I think some of the confusion comes in is because whether it's R1, R2, or R3, the town really only regulates the square footage. So on an R1 versus an R2 lot, you still have 1,900 minimum square feet for a single story, 2250 for a story and a half and 2,400 for a two story. So it doesn't tell anything about shingles, roof pitches, siding type windows.
In your garage door.
12 four pitch, single pane windows.
Yeah, so I mean, that's where, when, when we see like Greystone and things like that, that's where they, when they do the PUD and stuff, they kind of commit to LP siding versus vinyl siding. So that's where it, it makes the houses nicer on the accessories they add because if you did an R1 subdivision, you could do 100% vinyl siding housing with no brick. So that everybody says that, you know, how, how would this be as R1? Well, yeah, you could do it as R1 with 20,000 square foot lots, but then you could potentially have houses with no brick because our R1 zoning.
The value of that house is a lot substantially less than something that would be, you're adding more value to, adding brick, adding.
And, and that's like what we did with Streamside where Jeff from Altoff said they added tens of thousands of dollars to the exterior appearance of the house. And with the PUD, that's a requirement where the town can now enforce, you need this type of siding, you need that. But if we have an R1 zoned or even the older areas in town that are R1, the, a person can put, you know, vinyl siding on their house and the town has no say so to make them do brick or to make them do more expensive LP siding or James Hardy siding or, or anything like that.
And in layman's terms, going PUD gives the commission more of a opportunity to negotiate, yes, with.
You can require higher standards that would then.
And an R1, R2.
You're gaining more value on that property.
So we can request more things to be done and included into their developments.
And I, and I was here for that negotiation on Greystone, Greystone Unit Three. I know we went back and forth. I think it was required LP siding. Tried to get three car garages on most of the lots there. So those are the negotiations I think we're willing to do. But, but I know from the background, from, I know I've looked at the land around this. I know the, the team has looked at the land around us. We're very similar. There, there's almost always mixed use developments in this area. So having a R1 development or anything like that just wouldn't work given the, the existing development that's already here.
Now, there was mention of value, sorry, there was mention of value on the, on the structure itself. Bringing to the town, what other value would you bring to the town? Bike paths or improving Klein or, you know, those are the two things I can think of off the top of my head.
Correct.
Not just improving the structure for each unit, but what other value could you, would Shilling bring to this area or to this development to enhance it, to make it better?
Certainly if there was a, a, if there were a TIF involved, I think there could be some massive improvements done. And I think we'd be willing to entertain that. Most of those bonds are developer backed bonds, not your standard TIFs. The developer backed bonds are where the, the developers of this project would take the risk that, you know, that the revenue is going to be there in the future to pay back those bonds. They do the, so we'd consider that if, if that's something that, but I do know that there may be an issue. I don't know where the town line sits. I don't, I don't have the GIS up, but I don't know if we're going to do improvements on the outside of town. So I'd have to figure out where those sit. But one of the other things with the TIF would be that the town could say, well, we're taking the back portion of the TIF, we're taking a certain amount of the TIF and at some point we're bringing more land in and we're going to earmark that for future development. And we'd certainly cooperate with that.
So on Bob's opinion about the maintenance free, single fam, or the maintenance free housing on the west side of this development, how it butts up over there to Mill Creek? Could you not swap, were those maintenance free with the, something else that it's not butted up? Those small lots are butted up to those larger lots on the other subdivision or?
That's cer, changes like that are certainly something we'd consider. I don't know, I know Mill Creek, I think the, on the north side of their development is where they have their paired villas. So, and then to the south, so it's certainly something that Jack and the team would consider.
So I, I'm a very visual person, so I dug into kind of what our ordinance is already having placed for different zoning districts versus what is already in town, what's in surrounding municipalities. Our, our two ordinance is a 15,000 square foot lot, which I think we all know, 150 feet deep, 100 feet wide. What they're proposing is 12,000 square feet. They're keeping the 100 foot, 50 foot depth. So backing up to Mill Creek, I mean, that is a normal depth for a house with the maintenance free and 80 feet wide. So obviously there's that 3,000 square foot difference there, which I understand. I myself, my husband and I just, on, on a personal note, we just moved from an acre lot because both of us work full time and an acre is a lot to take care of, you know, so we wanted something smaller. Our lot is just over 10,000 square feet, 75 feet wide. Our house is 51 feet wide. And I mean, me personally, I don't feel like I'm on top of the person next to me and we have a nice backyard, you know. The R3 ordinance allows for duplexes. It's a 10,000 square foot lot, 90 feet wide, roughly 111 feet deep. What they're proposing is 13,500 square feet. So they're proposing a larger lot for their duplexes than what our ordinance calls for. Surrounding areas, it's, it's going to be a little bit larger than what they have in Greystone. And unfortunately with the maintenance free, our ordinance doesn't really address maintenance free homes and what that could look like. I know that's kind of something that's a little bit newer to the market. But again, 9,000 to 10,500 square foot lots, they're keeping that 150 foot depth that, you know, we're calling for in, in an R2 zoning. Yeah, different sections around, again, these are going to be a little bit larger than Greystone. I'm, I'm not trying to advocate, I'm just.
Right.
I dove into it and I just wanted to share what.
No, the 150, I don't have a problem with 150, but a 60 foot wide lot, 70 foot wide lot.
Bob and Bob.
It's not me, it's not.
I'll bring that back to Jack.
Yeah, it's not me.
And we'll, we'll take a look at our options there, especially where it butts up to Mill Creek. So I think we almost certainly need to have a mixed use development for this takeoff. I just, there were too many developments in this area that are mixed use and to make it all one housing type would, would be very difficult.
And I'm not saying that at all. I'm not saying this has got to be R1, you know, and.
And I, this is just Shilling Development speaking, but we do think that our common areas are well maintained, some of the best maintained in St. John.
You guys have very clean, nice developments. They're, don't get me wrong, I think they're, you guys do a wonderful job.
Yeah, and I think that's what we, when we're trading things off on a PUD, I think that's. So one of the, the stories that came of this and when we're developing and brainstorming and thinking is some of the individuals that moved out of St. John had looked at Weston Ridge, one of our developments we did a long time ago, 25 years ago almost now. Those units are still well maintained and they're still hard to get units in. They move quickly. So that's why I think that.
Earlier.
I, I do believe that when we put a product together, it will last a long time. And I, I think that's up to one of your earlier points. That's why we're confident that we can continue to do this.
So Joe, this has to go to the council and before it comes back to us?
So with respect to an annexation agreement or a pre-annexation agreement, that would have to go to the council. And if the council's not unanimous in the agreement of that, it would come in as R1. They could say at that point, well, we'll just withdraw at that point. So I think that's where it's at. So I think those discussions need to be had at a council level in addressing those concerns before I would even recommend.
Correct. And, and one thing we didn't want to do was. And, and one thing we didn't want to do was, if we did take that route with an annexation agreement with, with the PUD, we didn't want to skip the plan commission phase.
Right.
So that's why we are here on the concept plan to get input, to get feedback. Because I, I think theoretically, we could have tried to skip over, but I don't think it was the right thing to do.
Right. And that's very much appreciated because at that point.
Yep, yeah, appreciate it.
I think Adam, if, and correct me if I'm wrong, if the council does approve it as a unanimous agreement, as a pre-annexation, annexation agreement, then there is no action required by the plan commission at that point, would there be?
Well, not in terms of zoning.
Right.
If it comes in, if it's unanimous, unanimously approved by the council, whatever zoning classification is part of the agreement, there's no need for the plan commission to consider a rezone or change in the zoning classification. It still would hear primary plan approval. That still would, you know, come through the plan commission in a traditional sense, but, but no, not, not for zoning.
Okay. So I mean, we'd, we'd still be back in front of the plan commission, we'd have primary plan approval and engineering. So the zoning would just be the overlay zoning. So there'd be this, quite a few steps to get something like this, but I think we'd like to continue to vet the project.
And then we'd still have to go through the TIF approval, through the RDC, the declaratory, all that stuff.
Yeah. And it just, it would need to make sense for both sides.
Right.
Like everyone's pointed out, this is a negotiation and we need to see if we can find something that everyone's agreeable to. So we're hopeful. Like I said, we, we started with one version of our project in Graystone and found a compromise there, so.
Would it be a similar structure, same colors, same materials as Graystone for this? Or do you know?
Up for debate.
Up for debate.
Yep.
I think the sign going to be at the entrance is what I wanted.
Well, unfortunately, we're not off.
Five feet, hi.
We're not off 231 here. We gotta, we gotta back up, so it's probably not the same sign, but we will have.
The available signs that are all about.
Billboard. So we, and we did try and preserve some open space along Klein to make that, the appearance look like our higher end developments. So. As I said, we're, we're open to further discussions. We're hoping that, you know, we can connect our path to, to Mill Creek and you'd really have a walkable community. We really like the opportunity to connect to the commercial, to bring in some commercial on that area so people can walk. I know my family, we, we live off of walking path and we walk to a restaurant. We walk, go and grab ice cream with the kids after dinner.
That's nice, right?
So we do see the opportunity for that in this development and we continue to look at options. You know, we've, we're open to comments on, you know, the park, do you want a park? What, what do you want in the park? All those types of things. I believe Mill Creek has its own park, but I thought, I think it's a private park for the HOA. So we can discuss either way, how, how this park would be handled. It could also be a private park, it could be public park.
If you are talking about commercial, have you thought about the ICSI type of environment? How they look into trying to bring ICSI into areas? International Council Shopping Centers?
Yeah, yeah. So, yes, we've, I don't know if we'll be going to the, the, I think it's in May. But we're certainly involved with and discussing with quite a few people that go there. We'd like to try and get a strong commercial development there because we also don't want to just throw up whatever when we're trying to build out. This is a likely a six, probably seven to 10 year build out with homes not being completed for almost 15 years from the start. So we don't want to deter any future development with bad commercial development and vice versa. So.
And you've got some good commercial partners and we've met with them and, yeah.
So.
Very solid.
Yeah, so we, we'd really like to see something nice.
It would have been at the ICSI conference, but they got COVID, so. They couldn't make it.
Because they have a lot of possibilities there with sales tax increment financing that you can probably propose in the area to bring ICSI into the area.
And we, we would be willing to, this is right now, our concept has this as part of the PUD, whether that, we'd have, what we've done in Graystone is we've got a master HOA that, that handles everything, whether we'd bring the commercial, because we do have a couple of commercial lots at Graystone. So those are part of the, the HOA. That way, we can continue to control them. And I think that's one thing we like to do is that if we can put the commercial lots in the master HOA, we continue to control and make sure those are maintained. Those have covenants, what canna canna go in there? The homeowners would be allowed to have some, say, here's what we, we're going to allow in here, we're not going to allow a vape shop, whatever. So, but I, I think that's a, a really nice factor for this community is that you could create cohesiveness from commercial from north to south.
Any other questions? Should we move on?
Mm-hmm.
Move on, okay. Stone Creek, proposed concept plan for Stone Creek Plan Unit Development located approximately 690 feet north from the northwest corner of Parish and US 231.
Kevin Hunt, again, on behalf of Schilling Development. We've got our other site, again, by coincidence, 173 acres as well. This is the land west of Parish. It's north of 109th. Property backs up to the railroad to the west and power lines to the north. So on this project, we've, because it runs along Parish, we've got extensive landscaping in a long, a large berm that would run along Parish. I know we've got a paved path. It's probably a little bit difficult to see, but that would probably weave in and out, kind of like what we did with Preserve along White Oak. So we'd like to have that connectivity that brings us up and hopefully connects one day to the park, Founder's Park to the north. So we think we've got quite a few nice amenities in this development. We've got the large green space to the north that I think is open for future use. The entrances already in place based off the widening of Parish a few years ago when Parish was widened. And then we're providing the, the step to the north to Three Springs. The, one of the changes we did make was the maintenance free, single family communities. We did go ahead and, and suggest that we're going to alternate 60 and 70 foot lots to add that different product type that also allows a few different users, that some that are willing to take the, the bigger, bigger lots. With the bigger lots comes more expense and at, at a certain point, you can only have, you know, single family maintenance free homes that are, they can only be so big at that, at that, at the maintenance free level. So we'd like to mix those in like the change we made. And additionally, we, we did take back some of the comments from last time and we were able to redesign it, find some land where we thought we could get some 100 foot lots. So at the south end, you'll see that we added 43 single family lots that are 100 foot wide. That we, we bordered with the detention and the preserved woodland. We thought that those features could warrant putting a higher standard there. What we would do is likely have a sub association or the master association with pretty heightened standards for, for those, for those types of builds. And, and we think we could, for that area, we've got some amenities to, to warrant those. So those are the, the two prices, the two places we made changes. Now we've got a total of 356 units on that. The density is at 2.1 units an acre, which is comparable to many of the developments in the area. Directly to, I think, the east in the gates, you've got next to us duplexes and, and 80 foot lots. So we thought that this was good use of land. Again, if, if the town were open to it and the town were interested in making improvements on or near Parish or anything like that, we would, we'd be working with the town on a residential TIF. So again, both, this is probably, both these are long build outs as we normally do with all our projects. So you're looking at six to 10 years for the, the development and another, or a total of 15 for the build out. So I can answer questions on, on this development as well.
Just, I'm taking the same position as Calistoga. Three Springs, I looked that up, you know, 100 to the north here of your property, 100 foot wide lots, single family. And you're having 60 to 70 foot wide lots, you know, a budding up to that. Yeah, there's a power line easement through there, but.
Yeah, and, and that goes back to, I think, a lot of those three spring lots over in that area, but up to a pond, they're near the pond, so that development, and that's what we kind of did on the south end of ours. Also, I think Three Springs does have paired villas on, on the entrance road too. So like I said, I, I actually think we're fairly comparable to many of the developments in the area. I think that along the railroad tracks is where you've got a row of the paired villas on both sides of the street. So I, I do think that all these developments in this area have all been next development. We, we did, where we saw an opportunity, we could try and get 100 foot lots and I, we did take that opportunity.
I'm sure there's a reason for it, but I guess I, I just can't see it off the top of my head, why it maybe wasn't flipped to where the paired villas were on the south side. And the only reason I ask that is because with the property that's to the south there, the growing property, I understand that that's not in town, but eventually, if it ever is in town, I would assume that we would want that to be commercial since it's on 231. And normally, you go from commercial to some sort of, you know, multifamily, whether it's townhouses, duplexes, whatever. And then with it going into Three Springs in the north of there, like I said, I'm sure there was a reason and I'm just not seeing it right, looking at it, but just clarification on that for my sake.
I, I thought the same thing. I thought it should be flip flop, 100 foot to the north and.
So I'll let Jack speak to that, but I'll get kind of, Jack up speed, I explained.
Good evening. Sorry, sorry I was late, I was in Cedar Lake, but.
He said you like to go there better.
Yeah.
I explained, we added the, the 100 foot lots here. We, we use the natural amenities.
Yeah. So we were looking for a place where we could do an upscale section. That corner had some trees, some vegetation, some roll to it. I don't know, like you said, the history of that corner, it may go commercial someday, but it looks like it's going to stay a farm for a while, so that'll stay some natural land. We do have the, we, we've got the power lines up at the north end and we also have pipeline there. And then there is a section of Three Springs that does have duplexes adjoining, so that, that seemed to work to segregate all the products away from, away from everything else.
So Kevin, again, this is outside of the town of St. John. Would you be seeking the same PUD annexation agreement that we talked about earlier?
Yes. Before coming in, we would want an annexation agreement with the PUD zoning, obviously subject, you know, coming back for primary plan at, at the plan commission level. But yeah, and I was, Joe, to your point, whether that requires a unanimous decision by the town council, I, I know what the annexation ordinance says and I think there's a little room for debate because I've seen.
Well, I could tell you that we've been in litigation on that very matter with respect to PUD annexation agreements. And I could tell you that the town standpoint and, and the defense for the town is that with, with it not being a unanimous decision by the council, that the annexation would come in as an R1. So that's, that's the town's position on it. That's been our defense in, with respect to the litigation and it's been upheld thus far. So I don't know if, if, if there's not unanimity on, on the decision, that, that could be.
We'd want to make sure that there's a comfort level before we get to the annexation stage. If it feels like there isn't, then we would leave it as is.
I get it. And that's, that's, I think we need to have those conversations.
And that was my point earlier about if, if the annexation were to come in, we may annex it in as R1, knowing that we were going to try and work out something on a PUD, but we wouldn't just annex and, and hope.
Yeah.
Then, yeah, that would make no decision, or no, no sense at all. Yeah.
I, I know there were some questions before Jack arrived. I'm trying to go through some of those. There were questions about price points for the homes. I don't know if Jack can speak to that.
Yeah, any, anything in particular on price points? The, the single family section, the 80 foot single family would, would be in that 500 to 600 range. The, the 100 foot single family would be a level above that, so you'd probably be looking at 600 and up. The paired villas are similar to what was being built in Graystone. Those are typically three and a quarter to four and a quarter on, per side on a paired villa. And the maintenance free, single family, those units can range anywhere from 350 to 500, we've seen them go. There's just, we, we've really had a demand for the maintenance free product and so we'd like to insert that here somewhere. The, the type of product, you know, everything's maintained, the grass is maintained, it's mowed, it's watered, it's fertilized. Everything just is well taken care of and it's a really nice community and, and there's people asking for it. So I, I don't know if you talked about, just that we're, we're seeing the demand in Cedar Lake, we're, we're getting St. John residents moving to Cedar Lake for that product because there just isn't anything like it here, other than, you know, maybe Weston Ridge was one of our old developments that had a maintenance free product.
I wish, I wish you were here earlier too.
Okay, you talked about that.
Any other questions?
They were asking a lot of questions before you shut up, Jack.
Have we been here the whole time?
You had to hear.
Anything else that I can answer that maybe is still hanging out there?
Do you own those future lots?
Right now or no?
No, there's a house there.
Oh, right.
Yeah, there's a house on two acres.
I like your optimism.
Yeah, well, somebody had asked about it, or, or in one of the earlier meetings said that's going to be a hole someday. So we said, well, we can show how it can be used so it doesn't end up as a hole someday. It can be a couple of lots, so.
So and, and I'll let Jack add anything to the comment about what we're bringing and like I said, I think as what Schilling Development, when they're the manager on these projects, it's higher end developments, long-term success on, on their projects. We're open to discussing the amenities that are in the project. I don't know what else Jack would like to add about that. I did, I did mention some of the discussions about residential TIF, we could do bigger and better, better things.
Yeah. We, we talked about that last time too. I mean, the heavily landscaped architectural review on everything, we'd select the builders. We just feel like there's a need for this product, especially on the east side of town. I think the gates is winding down and it's time for. time for some new development on the east side of town. So especially our, we're very involved in the HOAs. And I know, as John knows, we run into issues on, and we don't back down on what our standards are for these developments. And I know Jack's got probably numerous examples of builders calling up and screaming at him, hey, I need you to bend on this, and he doesn't. All the, every single plan goes in front of us. We've got a longstanding reputation to uphold, so. And it shows in the development itself. It's why people want to live in Preserve or Greystone, and why the builders want to build there. They understand that there's a standard that's going to be upheld, and it's going to stay that way. So there's a comfort level in the property values. The property values will go up, so it works for all of us.
Are you still involved with the Weston Ridge Homeowner Association?
That one's been gone probably for 10 years.
Has that been turned over to them privately then?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, there's a group of homeowners that runs that one.
So that four years' negotiation with you would be just with the POA?
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know how they did it back 10 years ago, but now we maintain the HOA until the subdivision's built out. We keep control of it, and, you know, we occasionally get homeowners that say they want to, they want to take it over, they want to run it, and we resist that until the development's built out, so that we can ensure the quality of it.
Does St. John, usually, do they get, do you guys get notified that developers turning over the HOA?
No, not usually. That's between the people that live there and the developer.
That's a private thing.
Private thing, okay. I thought maybe just courtesy call if it...
No, usually the, when they do turn it over, the people they appoint will come in and kind of try to get us on the same page. And building and planning, it's beneficial for us to kind of make sure that if somebody wants to do an improvement that meets the town standards, we can give them a permit, but it might not meet their HOA. So we kind of warn them, hey, run this by your HOA.
First.
And try to kind of, because a lot of people move in, they don't even know they have an HOA. And then, you know, we say you get 160 square foot shed, but if the HOA says no sheds, then we've given you a permit.
Yeah.
And then your HOA's telling you you can't. So we try to get everybody on the same page before we issue the permit to kind of avoid headaches down the road.
Okay.
And we set them up pretty strong from the start to where, you know, eventually someday when we do turn them over, we make it pretty difficult for them to undo the rules that we've set in place, so. And we do hold them longer than I think most other developers. And part of the reason is we like to have that control. It is not easy for Jack and I to handle a lot of the complaints, a lot of the HOA issues. But we, as part of the development, we see the long-term benefit of holding it longer, making sure we're controlling, and things aren't slipping through the cracks.
What would your breakpoint at 90%?
We shoot for 90% or the final phase. Yeah.
Any other questions? We all good? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.